Do we have standing salute flag?
No.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Statement of adequate notice in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as follows. On January 11th and January 19th, 2023, notice was sent to the Home News Tribune, Star Ledger, Union County Local Source, and the Clerk of the Municipality. Ms. Armstead.
Present.
Ms. Carrillo.
Present.
Ms. Centron.
Present.
Mr. Dela Cruz.
Here.
Mrs. Fleming.
Present.
Ms. Pino.
Present.
Ms. Rosado Quisada.
Present.
Ms. Thomas.
Present.
And Dr. Burghammer. Present. I just want everyone to know that this is a no, there is no smoking permitted in this building at any time. In addition to the listed items in this agenda, this Board of Education may discuss and act upon other items not specifically referred to herein and ours follows at the regular scheduled monthly board meeting under the Sunshine Law. I would like someone to make a motion to approve the minutes for December 15th. You have a copy also to approve the January 5th organization meeting.
Motion to approve the December 15 work session minutes and motion to approve the minutes of the organizational meeting on January 5th.
Any questions? Roll call. Ms. Armstead.
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo.
Yes.
Ms. Centron.
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming.
Yes.
Ms. Pino.
Yes.
Ms. Rosado Quisada.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer. Yes. Now we're gonna, now we're gonna go to the next agenda item, which is comments from the public. Members of the public desiring to make a public comment may come forward at this time. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address. Individuals are invited to speak on one topic at a time, and no individual will speak more than once until all individuals so desiring have spoken once. The public is reminded that to ensure the efficient and orderly operation of the meeting, members of the public will be limited to speaking on items for three minutes. Sir, before you, sir, before you speak, could you sign in?
Oh, sure.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. My name is Craig Haller and I live at 120 Donaldson Place. I was going through some of the agenda items and in the education report, I have, I wish somebody could explain to me what item number four, 10, and 13 are, psychosexual evaluation that costs $500. Maybe I'm old fashioned, but I don't know what that's all about. And item number 10 is a workshop on restorative justice. I mean that if we start at one point in a circle and we go around the circle, all my, if we start at the beginning, all the power goes back to the beginning? I don't think so. And then item 13 is a workshop on restorative justice circles. You know, I don't know what these things are. I do wish somebody would explain it to me.
Eric, could you repeat the agenda item numbers that you're referring to?
Okay. Item number four in the education report.
Oh, in the education.
Okay. It's psychosexual evaluation that I believe there's a number next to it of $500 or something.
I would think that the superintendent would be the best person to answer those three questions that you may have at the moment, if you.
I mean, I can, I can get answers after the meeting or something.
Or it could be done after the meeting.
I'll provide you the answers of those definitions so that you have them.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Do we have anyone online?
Yeah, online.
Questions online?
Oh, just give us one minute. With the, anyone who's monitoring online, if you wish to make comments on agenda items, only if you could press the raise your hand on the computer and then our technicians can acknowledge you.
Okay. So we have, so we have no one in line right now, so we're gonna move to the next agenda item, the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening on the agenda, we have a celebration of the School Boards Month resolution, and also we just have a very brief video that we'd like to play to support what we're doing for School Boards Month. So at this time, I'm gonna step away from my chair and we'll play the video that we want to present.
Each January, New Jersey observes School Board Recognition Month. It's a time when we take the opportunity to thank New Jersey's 5,000 local school board members and charter school trustees for their untiring dedication to public education.
Local school board members who serve without compensation represent the community by ensuring tax dollars are spent wisely and by setting academic goals for their school districts.
School board members make the critical decisions that affect the education of our state's public school students. Their work has a direct impact on the classroom.
Our local boards enable us to have local control of public schools, meaning that decisions on school programming are made by local representatives who understand the community's unique challenges, values, culture, and circumstances.
Local boards of education represent the community in setting policy and establishing educational goals for their school districts.
We thank you for all the hours you devote to preparing for and participating in board meetings, committee meetings, school activities, and community activities.
You guys are amazing rock stars. We thank you for dedicating your time to the extensive training that makes New Jersey Board of Education members the best trained public officials in the state.
We thank you for working to make sure that every child has the opportunity to meet their full potential.
We thank you for meeting the demanding challenges of the past few years.
On behalf of the officers and the staff of New Jersey School Boards Association and our state's 1.3 million public school students, we salute you and we thank you for your service.
On the agenda, you see that the celebration of School Boards Month is for January. We also have on the agenda a celebration of Black History Month for the month of February. And I think it bears a comment that our attempt to celebrate Black History Month is not a move to polarize and to alienate in any way. It is really an attempt to achieve a better understanding. We here in Linden have no desire to engage in the culture wars. We take the opportunity of Black History Month to take time to listen and learn from each other so that we could have a better community. I have sad news this evening as we've had a past member of our school community pass away. Joseph Insonia Jr. started his career in the Linden Public Schools in 1968. During his tenure, Mr. Insonia taught at grade four and at, at school 10, and he taught language arts, basic skills, social studies at McManus Middle School and Soul Middle School, and then later Linden High School. He retired in 2000. We do send our sincere sadness to his family on his passing. Also, transitions on the agenda this evening is the retirement of Clinton Barion. Clint's worked for the Linden Public Schools for 32 years. He started his career in 1990 as an elementary physical education teacher at school number four. He's taught physical education at schools five and eight, and currently he's a physical education teacher at Linden High School where he will remain until his upcoming retirement. We thank Clint for his passion, for his dedication to the students and the families of Linden, and the Linden Board of Education wishes Clint all the best and hopes that he enjoys his retirement. I think tonight is a bit of a milestone, at least for me. Over the past three-plus months that I've been here, we've managed to achieve some important things. We hired a business administrator, and we have two assistant superintendents, we hired an HR manager. We staffed the IT department, the maintenance department, we rounded out our custodians, our secretaries, and brought in an athletic director. Operationally, we've been settling labor disputes and successfully negotiating contracts. This evening, with the approval of the Board of the administrative positions that are on the agenda, we will have, for the first time since I've been here, a full staff of administrators. Most notably, of the three appointments, Michael Walters is being made the principal of McManus Middle School. It's not a temporary job, an acting job, it is to be the principal of McManus Middle School for the foreseeable future. Mike Walters started in the district back when I was teaching Navy Junior ROTC, and in fact, when he first came into the district as a woodshop teacher, I was his mentor teacher. And of course, went on to successfully run the TV video program for many years, eventually became a supervisor of social studies. When I was here as superintendent before, I made him Director of Technology. And after I left, in between the superintendency of Dr. Robotosi and Dr. Hazelton, he became the Acting Assistant Superintendent, and then returned to be the Director of Science. So he's a person of longstanding, knows the district, has background, and I'm sure he's going to be very successful at McManus. Also on the agenda this evening is Angelo Monaco, who's replacing Antoinette Modrak, who will be retiring as the before-school and after-school coordinator. I think this job is special because it's a function that the Board of Education has voluntarily taken on, that we will run our own before-care and after-care program rather than leaving it to contractors. And so the employees of that program, besides being supervised directly by us, are our own employees, and Ms. Modrak has, over the years, applied for approvals for our programs that reduce the price for our parents and has brought extra funds for the workers themselves. Mr. Monaco will continue that program and also be watching the district's daycare program, which is also a Fund 60 Enterprise Fund, and will be the Director of the 21st Century Grant. I think it's good for Linden to have one of our own takeover. I don't think I'm talking out of school when I point out that Angelo Monaco, when he graduated from Linden High School, was the valedictorian. Lastly, we have a brand-new position paid for by grant money, the pre-K supervisor. This position was started because we're embarked now on a five-year program to provide a free, high-quality, full-day pre-K program to every three-year-old and four-year-old in the district, paid for by grant funds, not the local levy. This is a major initiative. It's going to require us to be working with contractors such as Head Start and others to service all of our children. The advantage and the need for this position is somebody's going to have to be running around to all of these places, making sure standards are kept because they are, even though we are contracting out, they're our children and under our control. Jennifer Doherty is the individual who will be taking on that position. She has worked in pre-K for many, many years. She's coming to us from South River and will start with us in April 1st. Other things of importance on the agenda that bear mentioning, you'll see on finance that we are approving the use of Genesis to be our student information system program starting in the 23-24 school year. The reason that we want to do that now is that Genesis will be able to run side-by-side with Encourse through the rest of this year, and that'll give us two advantages. We will be able to return functionality off of the Genesis platform in those areas that Encourse doesn't have it, and we will be able to start next year's scheduling in Genesis so when we roll over the systems in July, there's a seamless transition to the new system. I point out that on Tuesday, we had up for approval the district calendar for 23-24 and the companion 12-month calendar for the same year. Those items are not on the agenda this evening as the Board has decided to give extra review, and you should expect to see those calendars on the February agenda. We continue to work very diligently on preparing next year's budget. We cannot finalize the initial budget to present to the Board of Education until after the Governor's Budget Speech in the end of February, which several days after that, we will find out exactly how much state aid the Department of Education will be sending to us. However, that doesn't mean everything waits until then. We are continuing to analyze all budget lines. We are looking at our personnel very carefully and working various scenarios that when we do come before the Board of Education, we can speak of the need to be able to spend the monies that we are proposing and to show where, what savings we have achieved. It's our intent, as of this point, to continue to advocate that this district continue to receive the state aid that the School Funding Reform Act of 2008 says that we should receive. We currently are some $5 million short of what we should be having. It certainly has been my goal and the business administrator's goal that we would come to the Board of Education and have no tax levy increase for the next school year and possibly even see some decreases. The details of how much or how that works, of course, is dependent on whether we receive the anticipated state aid that we expect and other planning factors. There will be no new positions in the budget. There are requirements for new positions because of programmatic changes, but all new positions that we need will be offset with a savings that we find elsewhere in the budget so that it's budget-neutral or a budget reduction. You already see that in the agenda tonight is the disestablishment of the Director of Science position. In fact, after February 1st, I will assign the science duties to Derek Kondrokovich, who is currently the supervisor of data and assessment, and in February will come forward with a formal codification that he will, in the future, be the supervisor of science data and assessment. Lastly, we have a number of infrastructure projects that you should be seeing activity on the agenda. There were a number of projects that were approved for the current budget year that we are moving forward. How they move forward for approval depends on the cost of the project and following the various procedures, but you should see a step up in that activity as we move forward. We are also looking at infrastructure projects that we may do next year and baking those issues into our proposed budget for the follow-on year. Shifting over to the topic of security. I believe that all of us in the district were somewhat jarred by the felonious acts that have recently occurred in town involving students either as victim or perpetrator. While these events have not incurred in school, we always look at security, but even more so now as we become aware of some other situations that have been occurring. Schools like Linden, all around the state, have always been dealt with misbehavior, and we want parents to know how we're going to handle it. Every year, we put in a handbook, prescribed outcomes for students who may engage in certain types of misbehavior. We're very specific on what the consequences are for those behaviors. Those consequences become board-approved and therefore should be applied to everyone equally, no matter who the student is. It's probably also important at times where we might be shocked or surprised where acts of violence have occurred out in town as to what specifically the mission of the Linden Public Schools is. Our mission is to teach students, and in order to do that, we have to maintain an orderly and supportive environment so that students can learn in a safe environment and not be worried that they're going to be a victim of violence or bullying or somehow insecure. That doesn't mean that we accept responsibility for people who do felonious things. The responsibility for anyone who does a crime rests with the person who's doing it. Our responsibility is to make sure that we are as vigilant as we can to pay attention, to make sure that our code of conduct is applied equally, and to adjust wherever we need to for emerging problems or areas where there's continuing evidence that the misbehavior has not yet been controlled. We also engage in discussions and mediations and talking about what right behavior is because at its very base, public education is a value-based system. We teach students right and wrong. We cite what's good and bad, and we have consequences that don't crush people but hold people accountable, adults and students, to run a proper school district that all can thrive in. We are as committed to this as we have ever been. Where there are infractions, either in school or outside of school, that are a crime, it is the Linden Police Department that has lead in resolving crime, and we will support them, and we have a written agreement that is the same for all school districts across New Jersey of what our responsibilities are to the police and what the police responsibilities are to us. We're all trained on that document, we know what to do, and we follow it without exception. I want the parents to know, and I want the students to know, that we are fully engaged on a daily basis in managing our security risks and the outcomes of our policies. Tonight, I want to announce something that's been in the works for months. It is not the result of the recent issues that have occurred, but it certainly underscores why this policy move at this time is necessary. Per Linden Policy 5145.12, which is available to all parents online on our website, I, as superintendent, am authorized by the Board to run a random metal detector screening program for weapons. I am publicly announcing here, and the principals will be communicating to students and parents starting tomorrow, that we will be restarting these searches. Searches to locate weapons, if in school, and the searches at, the searches will be at unknown frequencies and at unknown locations. Nobody will know when the search goes to their classroom. I will have the control of the random system that will be used to initiate the searches. When a class is identified for search, we will have a team go to the classroom. There'll be male staff members with wands and female staff members with wands. They will line the students up in a line, and they will wand the, anything that alerts, we'll ask them to empty their pockets. If they're still in alert, the individual will be taken to a private room where a more thorough search will be conducted. If we find weapons, then we will involve the police and resolve the matter. Our responsibility is to keep our learning environment safe. We have had indicators, as disturbing as they are, that indicates that this action is the proper action, and the Board of Education taking due diligence to make sure that we have every system available to ensure that weapons are not in our school. Knives, guns, mace, brass knuckles, et cetera, are all weapons. are all weapons, and they should not be in our school. And we will be very proactive, more than we have in the recent past, in ensuring that those weapons are not in the school. And while we do apologize that we have to impose the restrictions that come from a random search environment, they're in no way balanced off by the increased certainty that we are doing everything that we can to make sure that our students are safe and the environment is conducive to learning. Madam President, that completes my report.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is our Attorney Report.
Thank you, Madam President. Upon recommendation of the interim Superintendent of Schools, I present the following item. Item 1 to the Linden Board of Education for Approval. This is, this motion will authorize us to amicably resolve a grievance between the LEA and the district regarding some summer pay issues. I believe this was discussed with all of the Board members, so I would ask for a motion.
Motion to approve the Attorney's Report?
Yes.
Second.
Any discussion before we vote?
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosado Casada?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
And Dr. Burgham?
Now, we're going to move to the Education Report.
Education Committee, upon recommendation of interim Superintendent of Schools and Assistant Superintendent, presents the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for Approval. I approve, I approve 1 through 29.
Second. So, one second. Anyone have any discussions on our Education Report?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Give me one second. I got to find it again. Oh, I'm sorry. It's not the Education Report. Sorry. I don't.
You don't have everything. So, if we have no discussion on our Education Report, am I move, rule call?
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosado Casada?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
And Dr. Burgham?
Now, the Personnel Committee?
The Personnel Committee, upon the recommendation of the interim Superintendent of Schools, presents the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for Approval. All appointments and reappointments are contingent upon and may be modified based on student participation and the district's receipt of sufficient state school aid and other revenue funding. I approve items 1 through 42. May I have a second?
Second.
Rule call?
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosado Casada?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
And Dr. Burgham?
Now, the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee, upon recommendation of the interim Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator, Board Secretary, present the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for Approval. I would like to respectfully ask for a second to items 1 through 18.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. On number 18, which I believe we may need 100 Mac Air laptops. I would like to know, well, put with it, if we can get an audit on our supplies. Because it seems quite strange. I don't know if on Tuesday we spoke about it, and it's been bothering me, that we had either 1 or 20 on hand with a district this size. And I would like to know, how is it that if one breaks, what's the procedure on it? Do we fix it in-house? Do we get Apple to replace it one-on-one? And if so, why do we only have 20 or 1 on hand now?
I can, I'm not pausing. I'm just thinking about the format that I report this out is, do you want this at the next committee meeting? Or do you want me to send it to the wider board on an email as soon as we have that assembled? Just tell me the format to give the answer. That's all I need.
I think since it's got to be a whole thing on the board, I think we could get that as a whole.
Because we've talked about this before, I can actually answer that question. So, if the computer breaks, if a child comes into the IT department and their computer is broken, if they can fix it on-site, they will fix it on-site. Sometimes they're made to make an appointment. They will fix it. Sometimes it takes a couple of days. They need loaner computers. Or if it's completely broke, then they would give the student a new one and send the old computer in. We always have, or should have, a stack of computers at the IT department waiting so that we can be prepared and available to provide to our students so that they have the ability to learn and be in class and be present with the items that they need in order to do what they're supposed to do. This is, I think it was, a couple of us had went to the IT department and saw and did a walkthrough. I can't remember which, who was with me, but I believe that we usually have this every year. We usually have this every year. This is not a new, a new item.
I'm questioning, so with a district this size, so we're one-on-one, how can we only have 1 left or 20 left on hand in case anything happens? Because 20, and if you have 7,000 people in the district, 20 is still not enough to get through that.
That's why we're needing to get more.
Okay, so, yes, but I'd like to know, where is, where is our inventory? We never had an inventory. They never said, okay. So, if I'm doing inventory, guess what? This is not accounted for. There may be a box of laptops in somebody's home that wasn't accounted for. So now, we don't know. That's why I'm saying, the number for me is quite low to have on hand now. And even 100, to whatever size we have, we have over 6,000 students, I think, system-wide. 120 laptops is still not enough. Because more than likely, you're going to have more than 120 laptops that might be broken.
You're absolutely right. And I think that we had some IT issues. And they are stored and accounted for at the IT department.
So, I would like to see an audit on what we have on hand and what's broken and that's not working, that we're going to give you.
You want to go with me tomorrow? I think it would be a good idea to go down there.
Whenever he can provide it, I'm happy with.
Can you open the conversation? So, what are we going to do with it? What are you going to do with it?
What?
Number 18.
I'm fine with it right now, yeah. Because if we need it, we need it. But I would like to have an audit so we can have accountability of what we have in stock and what we don't.
Absolutely.
It'd be part of that walkthrough also.
I feel like I have to comment on that. The accountability is to the Superintendent. And I am fully accountable for any waste or any fraud or any bad procedures that you may have evidence of. Absolutely, I'm accountable. You don't need the audit to hold the accountability. I have no problem giving an audit. I've already indicated to the county superintendent how many devices we have, that we could fully go to remote. It's a system like tens and scores of other systems that we have in the district to manage our resources of a multimillion-dollar budget. But I will gladly give the audit, as you call it. I think it's just an inventory or at least an accounting of the system of what comes in, what's out, what gets disposed of, which of course is approved on the agenda before things are actually disposed of. The only thing I will resist is an odor of something wrong. Until there's some evidence that I find or you find that there's something wrong, I think the simple question is you'd like to see an audit of material, and I'll definitely provide that. If there's an accountability, you don't have to go to the IT department. Nobody has to do anything other than come yell at the Superintendent. I will take care if somebody needs to go to the IT department.
I'm good with that.
Thank you.
Dr. Tomasek, could you explain to me item number 7? I know that you said that earlier we are, we're doing Encourse and Genesis, and we're going to face our Genesis. But you mentioned a cost here. How much, how much does it cost in the city to do the switchback? Do you know?
The amount on the Genesis, you say number 7, or is it?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm in the wrong report. The cost to run Encourse this year, right now, with all the services that we have is about $111,000 and some dollars. This is basically the same cost. As we talk to the Genesis people, they're giving us this price for next year, 2023-24. We've already paid the money for Encourse this year, and there's really no feasible way to pull out from Encourse in the middle of the year because the data has to continue for our end-of-year reports. But the owners at Genesis, who have had us for decades as a customer, are very happy if they can continue to be our provider. And to make it easier for us, they are willing that if we commit to going in 23-24, that they will provide free of charge the full service as soon as we convert the data back over to Genesis. They have all of our data as of July of last year. We only have to backload the data from Encourse, and then both systems are simultaneously equal. They will then provide the service where people that we designate can get into Genesis. And we have been working on ourselves on a plan to do either dual data entry or coming up with a weekly computer handshake between Encourse and Genesis to make sure that both systems are identical in the data. And so, this service from after this Board approval until July 1st, when the Board action that's being taken tonight actually brings the payment, Genesis is willing to provide access to their server and all support for free. So, there's essentially no cost for the transition to the district from Encourse to Genesis.
I have one question. With Encourse, we weren't in a contract with them, were we?
Yes, you approved a contract.
Okay, so it was a contract for one year? Was there a penalty for canceling, or no?
We're not canceling.
Any other questions?
Yes. Will there be training for the parents that are not familiar with Genesis?
We will have a module so parents can become familiar with it. We have an advantage that about the only people who wouldn't know how to use Genesis is anybody who showed up in the district from July this year. The parent portal of Genesis was user-friendly. Parents knew how to use it. I don't anticipate any problem. But as with all of our technology, if parents need, have trouble, that they can't access it, we have, that's why we have a fully-staffed IT department to help people use the product. The advantage probably for us comes with the full knowledge of the staff being able to use Genesis and not requiring very much more training because it's the product that they've been familiar with and then they know how to use. But I, through my own experience, have found Genesis to be very user-friendly, learnable. And as I said at Tuesday's meeting, this isn't some boutique side program that's nice to, if it works, okay. If it doesn't, this is our bread and butter of how we manage student data. This is everything. So, this is something that we have to have square on right, and everybody has to know how to use it. And if there are people who have training difficulties, it shouldn't be any more than we've experienced in the past and will be very attentive to it. There may be some extra work of running two systems side-by-side, but it's the only way to get back to a better place. We're just going to have to accept that and move forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Rule call?
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosado Casada?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
And Dr. Burgham?
Our next item on the agenda is Buildings, Grounds, and Security. Dr. Tomasek, during your Superintendent's Report, you mentioned certain stuff that's going on in our security. Where it comes to security, I would really like to know if we could go into executive discussion to discuss.
Yes, that would be no problem. I don't know how much time you anticipate, but the items that I have to discuss closed, which we can't say publicly, would be, in my opinion, no more than 10 minutes.
So, could we?
Like to make a motion to go into executive to discuss Buildings, Grounds, and Security's report?
My second. Just to be clear, we're going in to discuss confidential student information? And some security procedures?
Are we ready to? Make a motion to open back the meeting?
Motion to go back into public?
Yes.
Second.
Rule call?
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosado Casada?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Burgham?
Yes.
The Chair for the Buildings and Grounds?
The Buildings, Grounds, and Security Committee, upon recommendation of the interim Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator, Board Secretary, present the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for Approval. Items 1 through items number 5.
Second.
Any discussions?
Well, do have a quick discussion, a follow-up that I was supposed to do for, that we had for last month. And the follow-up was that we're still working on the Buildings Needs Assessment with Mr. Keith Aslan and the detective from Linden. And as soon as they're done, there will be a report handed to us so we can see our needs assessment, and we will move forward from there for the security part of the buildings. Anybody have any questions?
Anybody else have any questions? Rule call?
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosado Casada?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
And Dr. Burgham?
Yes.
Planning and Policy Report, no action?
Policy, we don't have policy.
So, our next agenda item is comments from the public. Members of the public desiring to make a public comment may come forward at this time. Please begin your comment by stating your name and address. Please begin your comment by stating your name and address. Individuals are invited to speak on one topic at a time, and no individual will speak more than once until all individuals so desiring have spoken once. The public is reminded that to ensure the efficient and orderly operations of the meeting, members of the public will be limited to speaking on items for three minutes.
Should I sign my name here?
Yes, please sign in.
This is a new thing. My name is Carlos Rivas, 1415 Hassel Street in Linden. Today I come in front of you not only as a resident of Linden, but also as a liaison of the City Council for the Linden Board of Education, in my new role as a councilman for the Fit Word. Together with my counterparts in City Council, we want to make sure that the Linden Board of Education knows that we are ready and available to work together with each one of you and with the district in anything that we can do in order to keep Linden moving forward. We understand that we are two different public service institutions, that we are independent, but that does not means that we cannot work together towards the benefit of our city and to the benefits of having our citizens moving forward. I also like to bring up to you that in our last meeting, we discussed the fact that we want to have the cooperation of the City Council and with the Linden Board of Education in regards to any type of programs that would include our youth in the city. Currently, the mayor's ju-
Commission.
Ju-
Youth Commission.
Commission, commission is raising money and is doing everything that they can in order to raise money for the project graduation, a project that has been instituted in Linden for more than 30 years, where safely the city provides our high school graduates a safe environment for them to cheer of their achievement finalized in high school. We wanted to make sure that every department in the city of Linden is very happy to know that they're available to work with the district, and I just want to bring a concern that one of my colleague council members make a reference in our last meeting regarding the property or the green area in school number six. We want to try to see if we can work together to try to either identify a usage for that area that is adjacent to the school. We understand that is the property of the district, but if it's anything that the City Council or the city itself can collaborate in order to make a playground for children, so working any type of way in order to develop that area, we'll be more than happy to do. The second part of my presentation today is I'm doing it as a parent, and I like to make sure that I applaud the decisions, to make sure that we maintain security on our schools. This is something that it might sound drastic, but it's needed. We cannot take any chances in the security of our children. I continue to ask for all you, my colleague members in the past and the new members, to please continue to ask for all the information that you can in any topic that you are willing to learn information on. Information is power, and as much informed as you are, the more opportunities you have to make the decisions out there. With that said, thank you for what you do. I want to use this opportunity to properly welcome our business administrator, Mr. John Seraplegria. Okay, I didn't have an opportunity to welcome you in our organization meeting. I'd like to say that in few days, few days in Linden, I'm so proud to see a budget formation calendar, something that I worked hard for the last three years to have, but I'm happy to know that our board members will have a detailed information of what they should expect in the decisions that they need to do. One of the most important decisions they need to do is the budget of the schools. I also like to use this opportunity to welcome to the district, to our Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Paolo Oliveira, welcome to the district. This is a great district. I know that you're going to be a great asset for us, and I also like to say thank you. Thank you for everything that you do, and thank you for keep Linden education moving forward. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Craig Haller, 120 Donaldson Place. I guess, you know, thanks to Carlos, I guess, found out about this grassy area by school number six. Why don't they turn it into a garden for the students to grow flowers to give out for Mother's Day, or some other worthwhile project such as that, or grow vegetables? I think it teaches children a lot and make good use of this piece of property. Thank you.
My name is Dani Orlean. I live at 516 Carnegie Street.
Did you sign in?
Oh.
Please.
This is new. Okay, I came a little bit late, so I didn't hear the part about signing in. Well, good evening, everyone. I would like to thank Dr. Tomasek for allowing me to attend the Linden High School Assembly. As the chairperson of the Mayor's Youth Scholarship Committee, I had the opportunity to speak to our seniors and juniors about scholarships opportunity that our Mayor's Youth Commission afford them. And also, we talked about volunteerism and all project graduation and all the wonderful opportunities that we are currently working on for future activities. I also would like to thank board member Saskia. She accompanied me, and I have to say, the children were very excited to see someone who graduated not too long ago, you know, take the time to speak to them, and I believe that, you know, they felt that you were an inspiration, you know, then too, one day they could run for the Board of Education and serve, and I want to thank you for that. And Monday, I'm sure most of you have heard of our Dine to Donate campaign for the month of January, and I have to say, I want to thank everyone from the bottom of my heart. What a successful campaign. Dine to Donate at Applebee's to raise funds for the Linden High School class of 2023. It was a major success. We have raised a lot of money. We, I was touched, we had representatives from Phillips 66, they were from Texas, and they came in on a training in Linden, and they heard, they read about what we're doing in the mayor's page, and they came in to support our youth in Linden. We also had board member Malaysia Thomas, who came out with her young son, and board member Annie Pino, I want to thank you. And of course, we had board member Armstead, who teamed up with this new organization called the Galloping Hill Cruisers, in which that night we raised over $2,000. And it was standing room only at Applebee's. It was amazing. And we also, I managed to have our superintendent, who participated in the video, he was not embarrassed, and I want to thank you because when people see you, the leaders of our school, taking part in our community, you know, it's inspirational. As a parent, I want to thank you. And I also have to thank the principal of Linden High School. He attends every single event in the community. He attends every single event, you know, summertime, and I love seeing that, and I think one of the recommendations that I would like to make, I would love to see more people working in our school district, participate in our community activities. I think it's important. We're all, like Councilman Rivas said, we are a community, we need to all work together. I want to see everybody. And January 30th is our last day, our last Monday for Dine to Donate. We are going to make it a little bit special. We're going to make it all about education. We're going to ask all the staff members to wear their district T-shirts and to come out to dine and donate at Applebee's. We're going to start at 5:00. And if you wear your T-shirt, you will get a free coupon for advertisers. So this is an incentive. I'm hoping that I will have the support of my colleague in the Linden School District to participate on Monday, January 30th. I want to see more people there, and also in April, we're having our color run. I would like to see more people in our district participate. You know, and it's for, like I said, it's for a good cause. It's for our children, you know, and I'm so excited. You know, I love when I walk in the community and the people say that we are thankful for what you're doing for our children. I don't do it for myself, I do it for the children. We have to walk instead of talking. I would like to see more actions and more people, more participation. And I'm going to end this. Once again, thank you. Please tell all your friends and family, Monday, January 30th, at 5:00, we're going to be at Applebee's. We're going to make it exciting. I want all, everyone, wear your T-shirt, from Linden High School, School One, School Two, School Four, School Five, School Six, School Eight, School Nine, School Ten. I want to see everybody participate. It is for our children. The money will go for project graduation and scholarships. If you're not aware, it costs over $30,000 for project graduation every year, and it's a special program to keep our children safe, you know, and it's an investment into the community, and I'm hoping that I will see all your faces there. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Rob Mengele, 18 Trinity Place, Montclair, New Jersey, LEA president, LHS High School, LHS High School, I'm having a moment, LHS social studies teacher. So typically, when I get up here, we talk about where we're going in district and all of the things that, you know, between contract negotiations in the last year and the settling of labor disputes and all of those things, that's usually when I get up to talk about. But tonight, I really wanted to take a moment and acknowledge a lot of the work that our LEA members are doing in the community, for our students at no cost to the taxpayers. Every year, we have dozens of events in our buildings and around the community that are funded entirely by LEA dues dollars. These events are open to the community, open to parents and families and students, and it is truly one of the great joys, is getting to help folks put on these wonderful programs. And rather than just tell you that they exist, you know, sometimes fortune smiles on us, and I want to take a moment and introduce Mr. Stanley, who will tell you a little bit about what he's got going on in the next month.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mr. Eric Stanley. I am a school counselor here at McMadis Middle School. I'm new here, and a little something that I've created, sponsored by the LEA, is the Black History Program, that is an informational show, student-based, where they create an informational show about Black history throughout time, where they are, they're acting, they're using spoken word, they're dancing, they're singing, they're playing, and they're taking us throughout time through their eyes. It's going to be a fantastic event that I wanted to just invite everyone here. I have invitations for you all here. I would love for you guys to kind of show up, and it's for the entire community, to bring the whole community together that's sponsored by the LEA. So we'd love for you guys to come out, and that's a little bit about me. Oh, it's going to be on February 23rd at 5:30, so please come on out and support us. Thank you so much. Oh, we're also going to have a vendor section as well. So after that, we're going to have a vendor section, where we're going to have vendors from all around town come out, and we'll have a DJ, we'll have food tastings, really something to gaze the community together so they can talk and really get connected, get a deep connection, and it's just going to be a fantastic event for students, families all around. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
I lived 716 Carnegie Street, London, New Jersey, all my life. This is a first for me, so I'm glad to be here. Thank you so much for all you guys' help throughout all of school systems, even me. I was from school five all the way up to high school. I just wanted to talk a little bit about myself and why I'm here. I am a graduate from Linden High School. I went on to get my mathematics degree at NJCU. Right now, I am moving towards my dream to play professional soccer as a female soccer player. I am, I am moving forward to preparing for my child this summer, so I just am a part of a program named KMSA. I've been there for the past four years, and they have been a great help to me growing as a person, as an athlete. I've learned so much there about the game that I did not have the opportunity to learn when I was younger, and I've always loved soccer. I think all the teachers here that do remember me being here, I've always been in soccer. Everything I did, I went through the recreation, I went through LISA, and I played in college. I think this is a great opportunity to bring KMSA to the Linden area. We do train regularly here probably the past two years, and I feel like it would be a great help to the children, helping them throughout everything, them growing, them personal development, them learning different things, especially about them going on to college. Being assistant college soccer coach at CCM, I feel like there's so much that they can learn, so much that they can get from being in a conducive environment, enriching environment, where it'll push them to be better people as well as good soccer players, push them to be able to speak and be able to articulate themselves in a positive way, to represent their homes, represent their town, give back to the community. They might not know a lot of stuff that's going on here, they might not be as involved, and I feel like KMSA can offer so much to these kids and giving back to everyone here, especially everyone has given me so much in growing and being a better person. So I just wanted to, we have an upcoming supplemental happening in March for the ages of seven to 12. It is at Alcala Park, and I've been communicating with the board and the city of Linden, just trying to get our flyers out and trying to get them to know a little bit about our coach and his sporting director. He's a past professional player of Guyana. He's done all his coaching licenses, and like I said, he has given me so much in the game, and I am probably here now getting prepared to play at the highest level because of the opportunity. because of the opportunity he has provided. So I want to definitely give that back to the kids, especially since I might have not gotten that education when I was younger to play that game. So we know some kids that might have that hunger, that drive, and they might not have the money, the funds, these things to really get that high level of education in the sport. So I want to bring it here to Linden and possibly give that girl the opportunity to learn at that age that I didn't get. So that's why I'm here. And I would be happy to give any information of upcoming events about KMSA and be able to share with everyone here because KMSA is definitely a great academy to be involved in. And I really think it will help our kids. Thank you.
Do we have any more comments from the public? Would you ask the public to raise their hand if anybody have anything to say online? For the public, for anyone who online who would like to speak, would you raise your hand so we know who you are so that we could include you in our session? Okay, so we have no one online with any comments. So I guess it's time for us to hear from our board members. But before we hear from our board members, I know within the last six months or so, we have gone through a lot, a lot of changes from a new superintendent to two new assistant superintendents to a business administrator. But, and they all have done so much in such a short time. Our superintendent has done so much. Our assistant superintendents are also learning and growing and integrating well with our school as well as our business administrator. But what I'd really like the public to know, to really, really know is our board members. For the last year, I sat here and I think that the public needs to know that our board members are parents too, or are educators and who really care. For example, we have Ms. Pino. She has been a teacher for so many years, a K-12 teacher for so many years. Then we have Ms. Dianara. She is a mother of two. And her children go to school in Linden. So whatever happens to all the other children affect us. Then we have Sam. Sam also have two children in K-12, don't you? One in high school and one in elementary. We have Ms. Sasia. She's a graduate of Linden. She's a product of Linden. Then we have Ms. Jennifer. Jennifer also, just last year, I sat side by side with Jennifer as her daughter walked down the aisle graduating from high school. Not only that, Jennifer does so much for the community. I learned that Jennifer helped wash clothes for students. We have a portion of our students that are displaced. She cooks for them, she washed clothes for them, she helps them. Then we have Ms. Brianna. Brianna is also a product of Linden High School. I remember meeting her when she was in a cheerleader. Oh, Lord, and she couldn't keep her feet on the ground. And she was so excited as a cheerleader. But now she is a board member. But she's also the sister of three high school students. Then Ms. Lamari. Ms. Lamari also is a mother of children in our school system. And Ms. Malaysia, a young son in K-12. And even me, I have a daughter that's graduating this year in high school. We are not involved, even though we do not get paid. We are not involved. We are committed. Because whatever affect every one of the other students out there also affect our children. So when we sit here and we ask questions and we go in executive session, it is not about us, it's about all of us. Right now in America, our school system is in trouble. So what's going on here is going on all around the country. But we, working together, could make a difference. That's all we need to do, understand that we are all in this together. And we need to join hands and we need to listen to each other. We need to respect each other and we need to work together. If we do this and listen to our children too, because they too have a voice. And the parents, they too have a voice. So what if we start really listening, paying attention and growing together? We could actually start moving Linden School District in the right direction. No, I'd like Ms. Pino.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see everybody here. It's like each month, we get stronger and stronger. All the seats will be filled. So February, we'll have all the seats filled. Well, you know, it's really touchy right now because things is going on. And ever since I've been sitting here, all I talk about is education and for children. And that's my motto. I'm here for the kids no matter what. You know, my thing is our kids are struggling for whatever reason it may be. And as adults and as parents and as educators, we have to give them a tool to pull up. And we have to ask them, what do they need? What do you guys want? Where you want to go? You know, no one asks them that. They asked us when we was growing up, what did you want to do? What do you want to be? Where you want to go? You know, we have to stop and think, our kids are the stars. They can reach for the stars, but we have to give them that extra push to get to the stars. And all it takes is one person to say, can you help me? And with that being said, why can't we help them? We have to help them. Who are we? We're the adults in the situation, we're the adults in the equation. So why not help them? And my motto is each one teach one. If I didn't learn, I can't teach them. So therefore, we got to teach them to be better than what they are, better than what they want to be, and to be better to where they want to go. So thank you guys for coming out. I appreciate it and I appreciate all your comments. Thank you very much. Everybody enjoy your evening. Thank you.
Ms. Dianara?
Good evening, everyone. This is my first section here. I'm happy to be here and I'm a little nervous also. But I'm committed. I'm committed to work for the school system, not only for my two kids, for every child in Linden. It's important, education for me is the most important thing because it's what is going to give them the tools to have a better future for tomorrow. So please, if you have any comments, any question, approach us, ask us, ask me personally. I'm here for everyone and I'm here for the kids. And I'm going to be, and I'm going to work as hard as I can to help to provide the best education that our kids can have. Thank you. Thank you for coming out and supporting us also. Have a great night.
Sam?
First and foremost, my condolences to Joseph V. Insomnia. Once again, when you lose somebody, it's hard. But my condolences to the family, be my prayers. And also congratulations to our retiree, Clinton Berrynot. I might have mispronounced your name, I apologize. But thank you for everything you did. Now it's your time to be alone and go do your own facade with a beer in your hand or something and enjoy your retirement. Also, for school number six and all schools, I am committed for all schools, but school number six is because it's my home school and I started with Ms. Perkins over there. So, but I was under the impression that that land was part of the Board of Education. So we will have to verify that. And if we have to beautify it, we can beautify it. But we got to verify whether it's green of the city's property or is it the Board of Education's property? So we just have to verify that. You have my commitment for that. And in the past three years, this is my third, and I don't know, final year or do, I don't know yet. But I say one term is not enough. Once you're in and you learn about the Board of Education, it's not enough to do what you want to do and make a difference. Okay, this is a big cycle. So we've been through COVID with no school, everything online, meetings online, to coming back to it in person, going with masks, going through a lot of controversy with masks, no mask, 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 and now we're with no mask again. And this year, we're full blown again. And we're moving along in the right direction. And this is the first time I do see that the board is actually stronger than ever. Okay? We've had our little disagreements, but not as bad as we've had in the past. It's like we had a big tug of war in the past. And I expect this year for a lot to be done. And I do wish we could take some years back from Mr. Tomazic and keep him on, but it's not happening. But I do thank him. And eventually, we still have to look for our replacement. And that's another tough job because those shoes are going to be hard to fill. Okay? And Ms. Perkins, Mr. Olivera, our BA, Mr. S. I don't want to mess up your last name. I do thank you guys and look forward to working with you guys and getting a stronger commitment this year and make it as smooth as possible. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to start off by thanking Dani Armstead for recognizing my partaking in today's assembly at LHS. It was very rewarding to be on the other end as a guest speaker. It was very nostalgic and heartwarming. I was there today not just as a board member and a previous member of the Mayor's Youth Commission, but also as a LHS alumni. I always say I am a LHS tiger at heart forever. No matter where I go, it's always in my heart. I too am very committed, like Dianara said, and I'm sure we all are, very committed for the kids. That's exactly what I'm here for. Again, I have a degree in Family Science and Human Development, so I do understand the dynamics and the importance of them as a family, as a child, and as an adult for the staff as well. I'm very happy to hear that we're all on the same page. And I am also very thankful that you all have taken me in with open arms as this is my first meeting. And yes, I too am, was a little nervous, but now I see the breakdown and I am ready to get to work. Thank you.
Ms. Jennifer?
Good evening, everyone. I would like to start off as well by giving condolences to the family and friends of Joseph Insomnia and give a congratulations to Clinton. Thank you for your service to the Linden Public Schools. We appreciate all the hours and gray hairs that you, I'm sure you've earned. And I just want to keep it short today and say thank you to Dr. Tomazic for coming here and still teaching us. He teaches us even still. And he's not afraid to tell us what we do wrong and what we do right. And I appreciate everything that you have done, which is a whole lot in the very short period of time that you have come back here to help us in our time of need. So thank you for everything that you have done. And to the board members, thank you for coming here and caring enough to come here all the time. Happy Board of Education Month, right? Thank you for choosing to be here. It's not an easy thing. It's hard. And you have to really be passionate about it to continue, to continue forward. And thank you to Dr. Berghammer for acknowledging us all. And I don't think that that's ever, I don't remember that being done before. So thank you. And thank you to our new BA and new, you know, assistant superintendents. I just want to say thank you really to everybody. Did I just say thank you to everybody? For getting up every single morning, for getting up and going to work, even though, even though the kids are cranky or they don't wear what they're supposed to or they don't do what they're supposed to. But thank you for getting up every day. And thank you for going and fixing those bathrooms on a repeated basis. I'm sure, I'm sure. So I just want to say thank you for giving your day, your hours, your love and attention to this school. Thank you. That's all I have.
Ms. Armstead?
Good evening, everyone. I first would like to start off by thanking everybody in the audience for your attendance today. I know that you guys could be anywhere else in the world right now, but you guys are here with us. So I thank you for your continued support. As you guys know, I am a new board member and there is a lot that I have been learning. And I am extremely eager to continue to learn and commit myself to the children and to this community. I do love the direction that Dr. Tomazic and the board have been going in. And I, as a recent graduate, and I say recent loosely because even I forget how much time has gone by since I graduated from Linden High School. Can't believe it. I hope that I can provide a new perspective and just really get involved. And I would like to commit myself to finding different ways to really impact the youth. I know that there's been a lot of things that have been going on, a lot of incidents that have been occurring amongst our children. And I just am telling you guys at this Board of Education meeting that I am committing myself to more volunteerism. I think that there's a way that we can actually reach the children and inspire and motivate. And like I said, I know security is an issue, but I do want to find ways to impact the children and try to resonate with them on a deeper level. I also would like to take the time to give a thank you to Mrs. Armstead or Mrs. Orlean for the Mayor's Youth Commission. Our Dine to Donate campaign has been extremely successful. And as much as I love attending, I would love to also see everybody in the audience at our last Dine to Donate campaign. It's really imperative that we raise money for our 2023 class so that they have the money and funds to attend Project Graduation. That was a special event for me. I enjoyed going. And it's an event that does keep our youth safe. Instead of them having to go out and party after graduation, they're able to be amongst their peers in a safe, regulated environment. So just make sure that you come out to support that. I also would like to take the time to thank Mr. Stanley. I love the initiative that you are taking for Black History Month. And I would love to connect with you after just to get more information and to promote and to properly spread awareness to your event. I would also like to thank Mrs. Taylor and to also congratulate her on her successful career. I think it's amazing that you're here and that you came to a Board of Education meeting. And also as a LHS alum, it's very inspiring to hear what you're doing and what you're accomplishing. So thank you so much. I apologize if you have emailed and it has gone unnoticed. I would love to connect with you after this to make sure that I'm also promoting and just making sure that people are aware of what's going on. So thank you for your contributions to our society. And that's all that I have for everybody. Thank you, guys, and have a great night.
Good evening, all. Once again, thank you all for attending the Linden Board of Education meeting. I would like to extend my heartfelt sympathy and condolences to the family, members, and loved ones of Joseph Insomnia Jr. I would also like to congratulate Clinton Berryon on his retirement. Thank you for your dedication and service to the students in our district. In addition, I would like to recognize that the New Jersey School Boards Association has declared January 2023 to be School Board Recognition Month. The Linden Board of Education is one of 580 local school boards in New Jersey, which we set policies and oversee operations for public school districts. Thank you, Dr. Tomazic, for the presentation. Lastly, but not least, I would like to recognize February 2023 as Black History Month, which will be highlighted in Linden Public Schools. Why February was chosen as Black History Month? February was chosen primarily because the second week of the month coincides with the birthdays of both Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass. February is dedicated as Black History Month honoring the triumphs and struggles of African Americans throughout U.S. history. Thank you all again for attending our monthly meeting and for sharing any thoughts and concerns on how we can improve our school system. Have a good evening, all. Have a good evening, all.
Ms. Malaysia?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming out this evening. I'd like to start off by saying that our district is experiencing lots of change in many different areas, and I'm confident in the recommended approach that Dr. Tomazik is taking to move our district forward. I'd like to thank the Mayor's Youth Commission, the City of London, and City Council for constantly staying connected to our school district and helping us in our initiatives to move the district forward. I'd also like to thank Mr. Stanley as well as Ms. Taylor for the opportunities that you are bringing here to the London School District. And lastly, I will say that I am an active board member, an active member in the community. I don't really like to talk about it much, that's not me. I don't like to be, take many pictures, to be posted up, to reflect the work that I've done. The fulfillment is what satisfies me, and I will continue to keep up with my responsibilities as a board member and my role in the community. Thank you. Have a good evening.
What an amazing team that we, the people of London, have here. I know only great things would happen, and our students and parents would benefit. Thank you very, very much for coming to our board meeting, and I want to wish everyone a healthy and great evening and the rest of the month, and look forward to the Monday event at Applebee's, I look forward to it, and thank you, Ms. Taylor, for coming. I know you and I have had conversations, and I'm really, really, I was so proud to see you here today. Thank you very much. Good night, everyone, and see you next month at our next month's board meeting. Would we have a motion to close the meeting? Second. Will call?
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Corrello?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosado Casada?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
And Dr. Berghammer?
Yes.